Roll call to resume open session.
Tolgetzky?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
McCain?
Yes.
Wertz?
Yes.
Hyon?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Rust?
Yes.
Hanfelder?
Yes.
The minutes will show that the closed session began at 7:04 PM and was attended by Robert Watson, Brenda McCain, Dwight Wertz, David Hyon, Julie Johnson, Charles Hanfelder, Kevin Rust, April Tolgetzky, Dale Chapman, Linda Chapman, Jill Litka, and Sue Keener. The minutes will show that the closed session was adjourned at 7:43. The board has returned to the meeting room and we are now back in open session at 7:46. Okay. The next item on the agenda is Resolution 20-1. And the motion is to approve the Resolution 20-1 for the dismissal of Assistant Professor Justin Hale as outlined in the Resolution 20-1. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to adopt Resolution 20-1. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Watson?
Yes.
McCain?
Yes.
Wertz?
Yes.
Hyon?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Rust?
Yes.
Hanfelder?
Yes.
Tolgetzky?
Yes.
The next item here is omnibus agenda. And I've been requested to pull C, H, I, and K. Is there a motion to approve A, B, D, E, and F, and J? Motion has been made. Is there a second to that?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve A, B, D, E, F, and J. Any discussion? J. Oh, and also G is also included in that. Yeah. Roll call.
Tolgetzky?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Wertz?
Yes.
Hyon?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Rust?
Yes.
Hanfelder?
Yes.
McCain?
Yes.
First item will be Item C, Bills. Is there a motion to approve that?
Motion.
Second.
Discussion on Bills, pages two through 26.
Yeah, I have one question, I guess, or whatever you want to call it, a comment. On page three and also on page 12, it refers to an EAB Global Incorporated Community College Forum membership. I'd like to know what is that? Is that the annual cost? And I tried to find it on a schedule of memberships that we were given and I didn't find it there. I didn't... Can anybody help me?
Say the amount. Say the amount.
Yeah, the amount was $12,862.50.
I'll have to get to you on that. I don't know. I don't have that off the top of my head, but...
Nobody knows what that is? Okay. Well... Is it in order then to pull that bill from payment, from approval for payment?
Okay, all right, so that's helpful. Thank you. So, there was a service... Ken, you want to respond to this because you know this pretty well?
There had been a subscription to a service to provide background information and data for various departments on the campus. It was our understanding it was for one year. It was their understanding it was three years. We said we wanted to cancel at the end of one. They told us we did not meet the cancellation deadline. And as a result, they were not willing to cancel. Jill ended up working with them on a settlement and this was a settlement payment to get us out of that contract and to stop that.
And Jill might want to respond because actually, given the legal position we're in, it saves us money.
And actually, it was a three-year agreement in spite of, I think, the verbal representations to the contrary. And we took the position we should be able to terminate it at any time and disputed on some legal basis that I won't get into here, the contract, and they agreed that we could get out after two years. So, that was just the payment of the second year of the membership that had previously been entered into and was determined to be payment in full.
Okay, yeah, that sort of explains it. Explains why it wasn't on the membership list because it was canceled. I did have another question on page 14. It's not really a question exactly, maybe it's just a comment, but SPM maintenance contractors are custodial services. That's about $97,000 for the month of June if I'm reading that correctly. So, we would be talking about a little over $1 million a year. What, does that include all of the locations of Lewis and Clark, for example, N.O. Nelson and Scott Bevan, or is that just here, Godfrey?
All the locations.
Yeah, that's all locations and it's a set bid.
Yeah, I'm sure it was a bid process. We went through on that. Yeah, that's for one month, $97,000 for one month, right? Yeah, okay. Have you ever considered, maybe, and do you use student workers, student janitors?
No.
No, never have?
We have never, we've always contracted that out, I think, many years ago. It was an in-house, but it's a set rate. I want to say it's a $10 an hour position is what they advertise.
Yeah, I know, maintaining quality is a little more difficult with students than it is with a contractor.
How many facilities is that?
I have to count.
I think nine.
Yeah, it's a bunch of... I guess one other question. On page 11, we made a payment or wanted to make a payment to AAIC, $29,130 for master planning. Is that the, I guess that's like the update of the master plan? And is that the annual amount?
I don't know what their annual contract is.
There's a set contract amount. That's not the total payment, but that is... It is capped at...
Well...
Eighty thousand, something like that? Yeah.
It's described as master planning. I mean, a master plan, we have a master plan and it has to be updated periodically. So, I would think that's what it is, but I'm not sure if it's that, that's what it is, and I'm not sure if that's the annual amount or quarterly or month.
It's not the annual amount and I'd have to get the full amount, but that's...
Okay. Yeah, we can get that later.
When you use architectural services for, it says master planning, but we try to assign those to individual construction projects and things of that nature. And when we don't have a particular construction project, but we have a problem, then we use that master plan for that purpose.
That is referring below that to Riverbend renovation. Could that have been part of the Riverbend renovation?
No, that would typically be charged to that particular... That's what I was trying to say is that, you know, their fees for the Riverbend renovation would be in the Riverbend Arena renovation. This would be master planning.
Okay, I think that's all I have.
I have a question or two here. On page 12, we have EAB Global Incorporated Community College Forum membership. Is that a mandatory membership? What does that involve?
That's the one we just talked about.
Why is it in there twice?
Yeah, the question, and I had the same question and I forgot to ask it, why is it in there twice in the board?
Could be payment for the first year, second year, Jill?
No, it's all, I think it's all for one year, but it might be coming from different funds, so that way...
It's split by fiscal year.
It might be an accounting issue.
It's fiscal year. If you look at the bills list, at the headings, there'll be different headings for the different fiscal years. And because it covered close to half and half, I believe, between the two fiscal years, that's why it appears twice.
It was a January calendar year for the membership, which is why it's split two fiscal years. You refresh my memory.
So, are we, I guess, are we paying out $12,000 or $24,000?
We're paying out approximately $24,000, $25,000.
Yeah, okay.
I believe the first year was 24-something, so this is just second renewal.
Okay, I have one more. Southern Illinois University at Edwardsville, the first quarter lease for $10,000. What is the benefit of that?
Page nine. Page nine. Nine.
Page nine. Dr. Chapman, would that be the ethanol?
No, it's the Healthcare Foundation.
Are you talking about that Healthcare Foundation? Oh, he's talking about SAU.
What was that?
Says first quarter lease.
He's talking about the lease, the SAU lease.
Corned ethanol, okay. So, apparently that is the corned ethanol, you know, lease arrangement for working, you know, providing facilities for the Process Operations Technology Program.
It's $40,000 annually, so $10,000 would be a quarter of the payment.
So, we, you know, use their facilities to help train our Process Operations Technology students so they get hands-on experiences.
How many students do we have doing that?
We have about 46 in that class. Well, we have a faculty member here tonight, so 46 or... Okay.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Mr. Hanfelder, that's a big class producer for Conical Phillips and that produces their employees.
Okay, I got a couple of questions. This is mostly just for my information, but on page 10, we're paying for athletic insurance totaling nearly $70,000. Can you just tell me what that is and for what period it's for? It's to USI Midwest St. Louis. I have an idea what it is, but if you could just clarify.
So, it's basically, you know, liability insurance and...
Is that an annual amount or how often do you have it?
Annual amount.
Annual, okay. Okay, that's what I thought. Okay, and then on page 18, there are payments to the foundation, Lewis and Clark Community College Foundation. And I'm guessing that we get money, we get donations, and then we turn it over to the foundation. Is that what's going on there? Is totaling $10,000?
I don't think so.
Phillips likes to send all of the money that comes to the college or the foundation to the college. So, it's automatically deposited into our checking account and we send a check then over to the foundation. And then the last two lines in that section are the payroll contributions for our employees.
Okay, so they're paying the employees and you're reimbursing them?
The employees, no, the employees are making a donation to the foundation.
Oh, oh, I see.
From their payroll.
Oh, contributions, okay.
Contributions, so we're making contributions. But the Phillips 66 and the second one, the credit card payment, the credit card system, I shouldn't call it the system, but the foundation does not have a credit card machine in their office, so if they have a need to run a credit card, we do offer online service for the foundation, but it's been more cost, it's been cost-effective to do it this way.
Can you tell me what that donation was for from Phillips 66?
Not off the top of my head. I don't know that I ever knew what their donation was for.
Do they...
It's likely to be a...
It's usually split between a couple of different directives and one of them being an annual scholarship.
Scholarship, yeah.
Do they have president's council as well?
Usually it's a scholarship, I think.
And just for your information, the account number that we've, if you've noticed, we've sorted the report now by vendor. The account number that's listed there is accounts receivable, so what you're going to see there are basically flow-through items.
How can I tell it's accounts receivable? What number indicates?
1309 as an accounts receivable.
Okay. Okay.
No quizzes on that, though.
No further questions? Roll call.
Yes, we had a motion and seconded.
Yeah. Okay.
All right, we just had a discussion.
This is to approve the bills. Tolgetzky?
Yes.
Wertz?
Yes.
McCain? Hyon?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Rust?
Yes.
Hanfelder?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Need a motion for Item H, Contracts Requiring Board Approval. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
An a motion made and seconded to approve contracts requiring board approval. Is there any discussion?
I have a question on page 40 about TARA Design. And when you read the contract, it sounds like it's to review the Monticello Sculpture Gardens. And I'm just wondering if this is necessary? I guess I need to be talked into this. And then also, would this be a good candidate for a donation, for somebody to donate? I'm wondering why are the landscape people that we've hired, could they do this? Does this have to be done every year? I'm just, I feel like this is a lot of money, $27,000 to review our, let's see, review the conditions and prepare a formal report on the general conditions of the gardens. Provide themes, design, plant selection, and definition for the garden show. Excludes graphic design, prop design, or onsite plant installation assistance, so I guess I need to be talked into this.
So, basically, you know, the campus, the Godfrey campus is designated as a public botanical gardens. We receive maybe close to 200,000 people here annually for events, prom pictures, weddings, receptions. You know, obviously the students who engage us here, fall academic, summer semesters, all, you know, participate at this campus. And so, it's one thing to sort of maintain the gardens, it's another thing to sort of conceptually move the botanical gardens forward in terms of its design, selection of plant selections, the things that you just read in the report there. And so, you know, they are landscape designers that do that kind of work for public botanical gardens. And so, we do receive contributions for the garden from Villager Godfrey. You know, people donate to the garden individually. The Ball Corporation, for example, many others. But they're doing that because of the, you know, the quality that's maintained in our public botanical gardens framing. And these are the people that are the, so the engines of that. We'll go to the microphone.
This year's contract does represent a significant reduction in what we've done in years past because we do feel as though there are some things, you'll notice that mentioned specifically graphic design. They used to do all of our panels and do some of our theme design. And so, we did specifically take a lot of that out of this year's contract because we do feel as though there are people in-house who could help supplement that and save some of those funds. And I will just add that on the foundation side, Debbie Edelman, our Director of Development, works with donors on a daily basis to support the gardens. We have a number of garden endowments. I think Chuck and Joanne Shepherd are here and they have a gardens endowment. I mean, that is our plan, is to build these endowments so that they are self-sustaining. But to Dale's point, obviously, it's something that brings people to the campus and it's kind of like the college's commitment to making sure it's being taken care of.
No question, we have a beautifully landscaped campus here, without a doubt. I just wonder after, you know, at some point, it seems to me like enough is enough and we need just to maintain what we have and maintain it well, of course. Am I correct in assuming that TARA has been doing this since 2001? The same company?
Yeah, we've worked with the same company. They actually came to us from the Missouri Botanical Gardens when we were designated. At the time, it was Shaw Gardens East. We were a Missouri Botanical Gardens site. And to your question, we have, over the years, have reduced that contract each year.
But also, I think, you know, it's important to understand that the garden you see now is not the garden we had in 2001. So, you know...
And much of this is for the annual show. And so, each year, it's kind of, you know, we've created this buzz and we're trying to keep it going. This year's going to have a 50th anniversary theme with our, with the college's 50th anniversary.
Yeah, next year's kind of special.
Yeah, yeah.
It just seems like it would be a St. Louis area company that could do this kind of work, but rather than somebody from Pittsburgh.
Any further discussion?
So, just to clarify, for now, the taxpayers are going to pay the 27.5, not donors.
That's the recommendation and that's only a portion of what, you know, donors are doing.
Any other discussion?
I'm not sure if I got, sometimes the page numbers get a little bit hard to decipher here. Let's see, yeah, I guess it would be page 40 and then 40I. We have a discussion about a Dr. Kling. We're in the right, is that the right section? We're still in, yeah, still in that section, right? And my question on Dr. Kling is, we're going to pay him for doing some work at that Engrac and is that going to help us break even at Engrac? You know, I just don't understand this. I really don't, the scope, to me, the scope of what he, and the proposal is pretty vague as far as what he's going to do. And I also wonder what Dr. Kling's background is.
Dr. Gary Roth is here tonight, so...
And the amount is 27,000, right?
Dr. Kling has worked with us for a couple of years and, you know, as I mentioned before, our model, which makes Great Rivers unique, is the science to policy and being more efficient in taking our science results into the policy arena. Well, what Dr. Kling's expertise is, is in working with state and federal agencies and organizations that are involved in policy. We don't have an in-house policy person. So, in effect, what Dr. Kling will be doing is helping us get our science results into policy and management more quickly because of his experience and contacts. He is a lawyer and he has a long-term experience with different agencies, so that's what that is.
Has he ever worked for us before?
Yes, he has.
And how will that be funded? Does that come out of grant funds or where does that come from?
It's entirely out of grant funds. And not only is it entirely out of grant funds, but we're always hopeful that he'll put us into contact with, or other sources of funding, so we fully expect that it'll pay for itself. But if it doesn't pay for itself through new money, it's still funded out of existing grant money. There's no institutional funds.
Thank you, that's all I have. I think... No further discussion? There's been a motion made to approve the contracts requiring board approval. Roll call.
Tolgetzky?
Yes.
Wertz?
Yes.
McCain?
Yes.
Hyon?
No.
Johnson?
Yes.
Rust?
Yes.
Hanfelder?
No.
Watson?
Yes.
Next item is I, Purchases Requiring Board Approval. Is there a motion to approve I?
Motion.
Is there a second? Motion has been made and seconded to approve Item I, Purchases Requiring Board Approval. Is there any comment?
Okay, I had a comment on this one. So, on page 41, I'm looking at the purchases and they're all related to the funding sources, tech plan funds. So, maybe adds up to like $80,000 or so.
Right.
And those are annual numbers?
Is that right, Jeff?
Or do we have to spend this once a month? Annual numbers?
Annual numbers, yeah.
Okay, and I just want to clarify, these are from the tech plan fund and that was with bonds, with debt that we incurred, what, 2015, I think, or something like that?
Right.
And this money's going to run out in a couple of years, and so...
It's designed to sunset every five years.
So, we're using this debt money to pay for these operating, annual operating expenses, right? So, we're anticipating that we're going to issue bonds in another couple of years to pay for annual operating expenses.
That are specific for the technology platform?
Okay.
Or, you know, find alternatives.
Yeah, I would hope that we could get to the point where we don't have to issue debt to pay for annual ongoing expenses. So, this is an example right here of how we've issued debt to pay for an operating expense. So, that was the point I wanted to make.
If someone here could speak to what Carley does? Because I think it's a pretty valuable service to the college. We can get you information on that. Library subscriptions, periodicals, things like that. Okay, thanks.
I can attest, it's very valuable.
Yeah, I'm guessing that most of these things are, you know, not really optional. It's not really for convenience. These are things that are needed. I'm hoping to run the college is why we had to pay it so much money, but so, not like something we can just say, "Yeah, we're not going to do that this year."
Right.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Any further discussion? If not, roll call. If not, roll call.
Tulgetzky?
Yes.
Wertz?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
McCain?
Yes.
Hyon?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Rust?
Yes.
Handfelder?
Yes.
Next item is K, personnel. Is there a motion to approve item K?
Motion.
Motion been made and seconded by Brenda. Any discussion?
Okay, I have a couple of comments on this. First of all, I don't see a recruiter listed on here. So what's the status of hiring our recruiter?
Yeah, you want to comment on that, Gabe, or? So the job description's been put together, we've classified it. And is it out there yet?
So when do you anticipate hiring one? So it's dependent on approval of the Gallagher study? Is that what you're saying?
No, I was just talking about the pay rate. So in terms of looking at what the pay rate would be if we were to classify it in the new system or our current system, there are different pay rates.
Okay.
So we're capable...
Who, who makes that decision?
So we're capable of classifying it through HR in the new system, right? Can you go to the microphone, Gabe, or somebody? So, so basically, the definition of the recruiter position has been defined?
Yeah, the, the position needs have been defined by Kent, talking with Dr. Chapman. And I think in concert with some of the things that you were hoping to achieve, the job description's complete, we're now to the point where we really just need to assess what salary range it would fit in. And really, I think it was our decision to wait until we brought the agenda item relative to the compensation system today to decide kind of where that pay range would fit and we could post it at any point thereafter, regardless of what decision was made today.
So maybe by next meeting, you can introduce me to the new recruiter?
Be ideal. I mean, typically, if we say if we were to post a position and there's significant drive to, you know, for applicants, that 30 to 45 days would be approximate time to interview on board.
That can be a goal.
Sure.
But that'd be a...
I just thought I'd press you a little bit.
Ambitious, yeah, we could do it.
I mean, so, you know, what is enrollment looking like for the fall? Is it up, down? Do we need a recruiter or?
We need a recruiter. Kent? It's, it's, you want to give a, tomorrow's the purge, right, so?
This is a very poor answer, but it's hard to know exactly where we're at today because tomorrow, we're purging students who haven't paid their bills. So where, the way it looks today will be drastically different tomorrow. If I could give you my best answer on where I think we're going to be, I think we're going to be somewhere around three or three and a half percent down in the end. That's a tough guess because we haven't got into the high schools yet to really know how things are going to look there, once that gets started with dual credit. But my best guess is probably three to three and a half percent down.
And does that include the high school enrollment?
Yes, it does.
Without the high school, do you know what, I mean?
Uh, no, we never figured them separately.
I'm putting you on the spot. But, but then next month, we'll get a, a really great report, right?
Next month will be much better, yes.
Very thorough and proud to stand up there and say it, yeah, okay.
Yes, definitely.
And maybe it'll be up because we'll have our new recruiter.
Right now, we, as of today, we are 3,328 students and 34,696 credit hours.
And when you say down, is that down from spring or down from a year ago?
A year ago.
A year ago, okay.
Spring to spring, or fall to fall, rather.
Fall to fall, okay.
And a lot of our enrollment loss is in adult students and we're kind of countercyclical with the economy and so that's factors into it.
I was putting together some information for the next Found Borsh, Foundation Board Meeting where we're talking about enrollment and one of the things we're touching on is adult students. And in looking at our spring enrollment of 2009 for ages 25 and over and comparing it to 2019, we've lost 1,400 students between 2009 and 2019 when you're looking at students ages 25 and older. And without having any research to back it up, I'd be willing to bet that the majority of those have gone to work and that's why we've lost them.
Okay, well, I look forward to your report next month. Okay. Okay. Then I also had a question on page 3C. There is a request for a new position at, at NGREC, River Watch Director and Stream Ecologist. Grade and salary range could be from $57,000 to $92,000. And so I'm concerned that we're hiring more people and I'd like to, I'd like you to talk me into the, why this is needed.
As I indicated before, we've spent quite a bit of time in strategic planning and as part of our planning process, we've identified science-based positions that National Great Rivers should have in order to be a fully viable program. One of those areas is aquatic ecology. There are two, two parts to aquatic ecology. One is big river ecology like the Mississippi and the other is small stream ecology, which this position reflects. We have an ongoing, active search for a large river ecologist and we'll be interviewing sometime in the next month. That's been ongoing now for about, about five or six months, I guess, when we initiated that search. What we have not had is the complementary small stream ecologist that works in smaller feeder streams into the Mississippi. So what we're doing here is taking advantage of a long-term program that we have called River Watch, which works with citizen scientists in this area, but all around the state as well. And they collect water quality data on streams adjacent to their communities and then feed back information back to their communities. But they also identify water quality issues on small streams. And so in our planning, we've identified that it makes sense to have a small stream ecologist to complement the large river ecologist and to build on this citizen science work. So effectively, this position will replace an existing position. It will cost additional dollars, but it's not a fully new position because the existing River Watch position will be collapsed. So there will be a net increase in costs. It will come out of the state grant funding. It's not institutional funding, it's not a new request for funding.
And that, and that funding from the Secretary of State, that covers all the benefits, now all the complete compensation package?
And, you know, I indicated before that we're moving and we do intend to move towards budget neutrality and, you know, I'll be working with you to present the plan for how, how to do that. This does not impact that. This is a, an issue that's been on the table for quite some time and has, will not have any impact on that.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? If not, roll call.
Tulgetzky?
Yes.
Wertz?
Yes.
McCain?
Yes.
Hyon?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Rust?
Yes.
Handfelder?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Next item, informational.
Information items, and so I think, Mr. Chairman, that everything is as appears in your board book, down to F, and then I think Laurie Arts is going to introduce our special guest tonight. We had a very successful drill.
So I told you last month that we were going to be doing a full-scale disaster drill on August 2nd. That has been completed and Chris Sikra is here tonight to just kind of give us a grade and give you guys an overview of, of how we did. We work with Chris as our Emergency Operations Plan Consultant. He's a St. Louis firefighter and is actually taking the day off to be here tonight to kind of just give you an update of what's happened and, and where we're headed with our emergency operations. Chris?
Thank you, Lori. So while I've had the pleasure to address some of the board, I know we've got some new members. I addressed you last year when we introduced the NIMS, ICS compliant Emergency Operation Plan that I drafted for you guys. But I wanted to formally introduce myself to some of the newer members who might not have known me or known any of my background. Again, my name's Chris Sikra, I'm the owner and consultant of SCS LLC. I've spent nearly 30 years working in career public safety roles and positions. Most of that time has been in municipal government. 24 of those years has been with St. Louis City. Various roles from the Airport Police Department to the St. Louis City Marshal's Office. I was assigned as a Deputy Mayor of Clarence Harmon's liaison. And of course, the past 20 years has been specifically with St. Louis Fire Department as a firefighter, to which I'm actually getting ready to retire in about two, three weeks from now. In addition to that, I've also been serving, as she said, with Godfrey's Public Safety as their administrator and as an emergency management coordinator, or emergency manager. And of course, I've been working with you guys for the past four years to develop this. And of course, recently, I'm also assisting you to develop your risk management plan as well, taking on an additional project to help out. I'll take real brief, I want to appreciate you guys giving me the opportunity to summarize the exercise that we conducted a couple of weeks ago. I provided a more detailed analysis for you that you should have in front of you there. It's broken into basically all the things we tested and examined. You can read this a little bit later at your leisure, because I know we've got a full agenda tonight. The second page deals with all the roles that our senior administration have been assigned according to NIMS or ICS. Basically, that's National Incident Management System and Incident Command System. This is the standard template that all fire, police, EMS, and even private agencies are required to follow now when we develop these plans and we assign senior administrative roles to agencies like Village of Godfrey or the college to manage a crisis that happens, like a large-scale tornado or earthquake or what have you. Of course, the last few pages deals with the actual parameters of what we tested during the exercise. Has a breakdown of the different damage areas that we had, that we simulated. And of course, there's a section that deals with photographs of actually, that we documented while we were doing some of the action, kind of give you an idea of what we were doing. So again, first off, this exercise was a full-scale disaster exercise. This was not a drill. A lot of people, when I talk to people that aren't in the street, confuse this with like a school fire drill or an earthquake drill where the kids get under the desks. This is completely different than that. This is essentially a large catastrophic incident that we simulate that involves strategic decision-making by our incident management team, who are the senior administration of the college, who we train with regularly, or I train with regularly every month. And it involves our own resources, like the security department, the management, facilities management staff, to sort of interact and provide assistance on campus or at any of our facility campuses while we're waiting for help to come. For this particular exercise, again, we focused on the strategic aspects of the administration managing the disaster with our own in-house resources and staff. And of course, I wrote into the exercise that they weren't aware of initially that we are going to be on our own for a little while. And a big tornado, that's more than likely going to be the reality of it because if the trees are down, roads are blocked, first responders are out there cutting their way to try to get to you or to try to get to neighborhoods where they might be more impacted, we might be on our own for a couple of hours. So essentially, what we train is to follow the three mission priorities. Life safety, incident stabilization, and property conservation. That involves our decision-making teams directing resources that are coming in, coming to staging, giving them safety briefings before, for instance, maintenance pairing up with security to do quick damage assessments or what I call a windshield assessment. Spotting critical items that could hurt or kill people, which is life safety. Power lines down, a pole down, odor of natural gas, sick case or injury. And addressing and dealing with those, prioritizing those calls immediately, ahead of all the other stuff that's going on on top of it. Everyone did a great job. So in addition to the strategic aspects we tested, we also employed some of the technical operations of the campus emergency operation plan that was involved. We tested the emergency communications and notification systems, like the LC Alert, the Rave, and the notification radio that we have. We tested the public warning system audible with the siren, which we also test every month on the first Tuesday. We tested the staff's ability to provide proper record keeping or oversee proper, proper record-keeping documentation of events and damage, which involved ICS 214 disaster logs, timestamping and benchmarking, which are critical, especially if you're turning stuff into insurance. We took it a step further and went into photo documentation of the damage, which would be important to give to Mary Schulte for the documentation to turn into insurance as well. We tested the team's ability to set up an incident command post, activate the operations center, the Emergency Operations Center, which is primarily located at the security building, basically getting that into effect and rolling it out, setting up staging areas, recalling staff, and deploying those damage assessment teams. We tested the interoperability with our local first response agencies. This was fire, Godfrey Fire, law enforcement, EMS, Alt Memorial Ambulance had vehicles come out, our vehicle come out. We simulated that call. We even had the Alt and Volunteer Emergency Corps bring their ambulance out as a backup incident command post, which worked out well. And of course, we tested the incident management team's ability to prioritize and address life safety threats first and take action and deploy proper resources to assist. For instance, like the EMS call that we wrote into the exercise or the hazmat call, which was a natural gas odor over Reed Hall. We simulated damage to a gas line or a pilot-like leak. So some of the positive points that I really liked, if I had to give a grade, it'd have to be an A. And I've never seen that before with an agency. Of all the exercises that I've done myself, there's always a learning curve. I attribute it to the fact that all of the incident management teams have been doing their due diligence, coming to the meetings, being very involved every month when we go over each app, chapter and section of the annex. They ask questions, we kind of do little tabletop discussions. They're, they've already got it in their mind of what they need to do and what their roles are, which are outlined in this book, to follow it to the T, and they did that. Security department did great, maintenance department did great. All of your security team members have gone through the Incident Command and NIMS class that I, I teach here on campus for them. ICS 100, 200, and 700 levels. The incident management team actually has more certification levels above that through the FEMA site that I have them test and certify on. I was really impressed with the detail-oriented setup and preparation, which the Planning Section Chief by Brad Raish made sure that all the props were in place. He made sure, he took it a step further by using barricades to actually block roads to simulate trees down. It was a little extra attention to heal, I really appreciated that. I was impressed with the staff's use of equipment and resources. Even Mike Randall had them roll the tractor out and the front loader to move the simulated barricades, to simulate that they were heavy. And I didn't expect them to take that extra step as well and it made me very happy. And of course, I was impressed with the level of professionalism shown by the officers, the maintenance staff, clinic staff, nurse who participated in the exercise also. And of course, the incident management team members. Everybody shows enthusiasm when we do this. And it's not always true when they see this in local government. So the fact that everybody jumped in, they took the roles on, they built in preparation disaster kits that they do damage assessment with that are located in the EOC, vests, lights, a lot of attention to detail. They follow the lists to the T. I look forward to doing more of these with you guys and keeping everybody on their toes and we'll probably pick something different. I just, I appreciate how well everyone works together here and if you guys have any questions?
Yeah, I have a quick question, I guess. Is any part of your assessment, does it assess the preparedness of the information technology group as far as, because they're going to be impacted by a tornado?
Absolutely. So in the Emergency Operation Plan, we talk about, a good example would be when we do the tornado cyber tests, I also have them do the generator system tests, for instance, at Erickson Hall, which is backup support where your servers are. Of course, we're going to be talking more about IT backup support in the risk management plan as well, but there are components in there that deal with ensuring that the firewalls are in place, that proper updating of material is done in dealing with a crisis. For instance, a virus gets in and being able to back up material. Even the incident management team, I provided with their disaster plans a thumb drive that has all the documentation so that if we were wiped out as far as laptops or whatever, they would have something to start with. It's the same thing I do for the Village of Godfrey, it's a backup for a backup. So, yes, sir. Any other questions? Any curiosity, anything? I've got all the answers or some of the answers. Yeah, good job, guys.
Discussion items, construction project status.
Trying to do this rather quickly. Everything is as presented in page nine. Just a quick update on Riverbend Arena. We are, we met today, we're in the final stages of taking over the first floor. The gym is done, volleyball is practicing. We are getting the hallway floors completed this week and met today to talk about moving back in the exercise equipment. So just really finishing touches on the first floor. The second floor, the framing is done, working on the mechanical, electrical plumbing. And we'll, again, we'll have the second floor back. the second floor back by December. So we're on, we're on the right path in Riverbend Arena. Nothing really new on the main complex foundation. And then on the northeast campus site, lighting improvement. As you can tell, we are still waiting for poles and lights. So we are working very hard with our vendors to try to get those. Apparently, there is quite a backlog of orders, and we're pushing from every angle to try to get ours in here as quickly as possible. But we'll, we'll work with security if necessary, if we don't have those before the start of classes, for night classes, anyway.
Lori?
Yes.
Now, PHS, that's for Public Health and Safety, right?
Uh huh.
What does it mean when it says "public funded by PHS savings"? This is, you're talking about the money that's coming in from the taxpayer and going into the PHS?
Right. So those are the PHS bonds that were levied for those projects. And as their savings, we would come back to the board and request permission to use any savings from previous projects that were levied.
Okay. So this is bond issue money?
Is it 100%?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
If you can efficiently do a project and it doesn't cost what you anticipated it would, then you can transfer those to the next project?
Yeah.
Thank you. Articulation agreements.
This is an annual report that is taken to the board in August of the year. The purpose of articulation agreements with four-year colleges and universities is to accelerate attainment of baccalaureate degrees. So what we do is we sit down with colleges and universities and negotiate initial articulation agreements. And then every year, we review one-third of the list. So we have sixty-eight articulation agreements, and we reviewed one-third of those agreements. And some of those are updated annually. That's one of the caveats included in the agreement. You can see the agreements that were reviewed and updated in the list in front of you. There were three new agreements executed in this past year. Roosevelt University, a dual-degree program. Southern Illinois University, Carbondale, a two-plus-two. A two-plus-two, just to distinguish it from articulation or transfer guides, is what we really like having for our students. It lines up four semesters at Lewis and Clark, and then the next four semesters at the university. So it makes advising very accurate. And the baccalaureate of engineering that you heard Jill Lane report on earlier with the University of Illinois Urbana-Champaign. Questions?
Did any drop off this year? Did we, did we discontinue any?
No, we didn't. We revised some of them. I mean, it's very important that we're looking at these at least every three years, because of course, curricula change, and it's important that we know what those changes are in order to advise students. But none came off the list this year.
And this is a complete list, right?
This is the list of those we reviewed, the one-third of the sixty-eight we reviewed.
Okay, yeah, this is just a portion of, for example, like Quincy College, Illinois College.
Yes, only one-third of the sixty-eight were reviewed.
I think the reason none of them dropped off, they want our students.
Are you going to address the new full-time?
The next item that I have is on new full-time faculty who are beginning in this month with us. We'll have five new full-time faculty members. I'm going to give you a brief biography of those faculty members. Angela Hung replaces Joe McFarland, who retired in May from the art department. She's taught in the art department since 2007 as an adjunct faculty member. She's a gifted ceramicist and a teacher. Angela has taught ceramics, sculpture, and 3D design at Lewis and Clark, Blackburn University, and St. Louis Community College at Florissant Valley. In addition to teaching, Angela will plan, promote, and implement art exhibits. She earned her MFA at Fontbonne University and her baccalaureate of arts at York University in Toronto, Ontario. David Petroulis replaces Luke Jumper in architecture. He's a registered architect who, for the last fourteen years, has directed the Architectural Technology Program at the College of Lake County in Illinois. At CLC, he also taught in the construction management, technology, and computer-aided design departments. He earned a master's in architecture from the University of Wisconsin-Milwaukee and earned a baccalaureate in architecture. In addition to his teaching, David has worked as an architect in his own practice and a principal architect in other firms. He's taught for the College DuPage, the University of Southern Illinois Edwardsville, and Hersing College in Madison, Wisconsin. Dr. But I'm going to get this. Vatayatil. Rosemarie Vatayatil replaces Dr. Tony Phillips in biology with a focus on microbiology. She earned her PhD in biological sciences from the University of California, Irvine, a BS in biology from Southern Connecticut State University, and a postdoctoral associate at Yale University. Rosemarie has taught at Washington State University, Southern Illinois University Edwardsville, Southwestern Illinois College, McKendry, and Maryville Universities. Abby Stevens replaces Dr. Liu in biology with a focus on anatomy and physiology. Abby taught for ten years at Southern Illinois University Edwardsville as an adjunct in the Department of Biological Sciences, where she was also a lab coordinator. She taught for several semesters as an adjunct for Lewis and Clark, teaching anatomy and physiology. Abby earned a BS in biology from Aurora University in Aurora, Illinois, and an MS in environmental chemistry at Southern Illinois Edwardsville. Ashley Mayernick replaces Stephanie Klemminger in nursing. Ashley earned her baccalaureate and master's degrees in nursing from Chamberlain College of Nursing. She worked as a registered nurse at Barnes Jewish Hospital in the neonatal intensive care unit, and the Order of St. Francis-St. Anthony's Health Center as a medical surgical nurse. She's also taught as an adjunct professor at the University of Missouri-St. Louis for several years. These are five new faculty members who bring backgrounds and professional experiences and unique talents to be shared with our students, faculty, and staff. We're excited to have them.
I see these are all replacements?
Yes.
Of faculty that left. Were there any faculty that left the college that were not replaced?
Yes.
How many?
I can think of one off the top of my head. I know there are two deans behind me who might think of others. That was in networking. We've struggled for several years. We've also had a position posted for medical assisting, and we just don't have applicants who are qualified. My dean.
Kathy Kopelousis in mathematics.
Did you hear that?
No.
Kathy Kopelousis in mathematics.
And Denise Plunk in biology.
Yeah, of course, of course, my, in my penny-pinching self, I have to think, well, are we, do we need to be careful about that when we have a shrinking student body? We have to be careful about?
And we are.
Our level of faculty?
That is true.
With a student comment?
I'd just like to say, Dr. Vatayatil, she came into my microbiology class over, in the spring, and actually did her interview. We didn't realize it was an interview, but she was fantastic. She, she, she was great.
Your pronunciation without hesitation, unlike my own. Thank you so much, April.
Thank you. Hidden history event. Anyone?
Good evening. I'm here this evening to spill the soybeans. That's how we like to refer to it. My colleague, Liz Burns and I, who was unable to be here this evening, were asked to identify the location of the first planting of soybeans, which occurred in Alton, Illinois. This was at the prompting of Dr. Chapman, who was prompted by Gary Rolfe, because the former colleague of Dr. Rolfe at the University of Illinois was the one who had written the original article about that planting. And so through a lot of research, you don't do historical research easily, because you have to plow through numerous publications. We were able to identify the site, which is at 417 Prospect in the city of Alton. And in doing so, we were able to and encouraged to apply for a historical marker, which has to be, of course, done through the Illinois State Historical Society. And you have to provide documentation, at least two forms for every significant fact that you produce, and you want to be included in that. And so we did that, and we were happily granted that. And the state actually told us it was one of the best applications they had ever seen. So we take a lot of pride of that. So on Friday, August the 23rd, will be the unveiling of that marker at the location. If you're familiar with Alton, it is now the home of the Loretto Towers, but at the time, it was the home of James Henry Lee, who was a prominent businessman in the city. And just a brief story, so you know how it goes. Dr. Benjamin Franklin Edwards, prominent physician in 1849, caught gold rush fever. We thought maybe he had gone out to California to seek his fortune in gold, but we later discovered that he actually kind of capitalized on the adventure, because before he even left, he sent a good number of kind of what we think would be like a prefab house kind of thing that he sold to prospectors, and even created a community there in California to do that. Dr. Edwards went there, spent a couple of years, and actually, it was when he was in the port of San Francisco, preparing to come back to Alton, that there was a Japanese junk, as they referred to them, a ship that had been shipwrecked in the Pacific Ocean for about fifty days, had been rescued by a ship called the Auckland, brought those sailors to the port of San Francisco. We don't know exactly the details. It was never clearly stated. But somehow, Dr. Edwards was able to get his hands on what they referred to as the Japanese peas, several seeds. And so he brought those back to Alton, gave them to his friend, James Henry Lee. He planted them in his garden, kind of got the results from that, published that, along with his uncle, Henry Lee, sent them to James Henry's father, John Lee, in Cincinnati, Ohio, who published the article stating about how the soybeans had come to be, the description of them and everything. And then from there, many other states were able to continue the further propagation of what we now know as the soybean.
So we could say that essentially, all the soybeans that you see in Illinois came from these few plants?
They started it. So it's just been a real privilege for Liz and I, and as representatives of the college, to be involved in this research, working with the city of Alton to get this marker approved and soon to be erected and unveiled.
Thank goodness the Japanese peas turned out a lot better than the Japanese honeysuckle.
Indeed.
Thank you. Action items, approval of grant or sponsored contract opportunities. We could either vote on all of them or some of them. Is there a motion to approve? Item A.
Second.
Been a motion made and seconded to, on item A, for the approval of grant or sponsored contract opportunities. Any discussion?
Yeah, I have a little question. On the very first one there, eight point nine, thirteen point nineteen dash one. I don't, the matching requirement is, first of all, I don't, I'd like to understand that a little bit. Is the matching requirement 161.5 plus the 35% in-kind match, or those one in the same?
That's an Engric project, I think, Gary.
While you're looking for that, maybe my other question would be, I mean, this is for the, the study of dragonflies and damselflies. And, you know, I question whether that's really a wise use of money. I mean, I, I love, I love to watch dragonflies fly, but I see a lot of them. Maybe they're in trouble. I don't think they are, but.
Which one's that?
This is on, this is on page thirteen, the very first one, the very top one, nineteen dash one.
Yeah, but what's the dragonfly one? Which one is the dragonfly one?
Which one is the, they're both dragon. That's for the study of both kinds of flies, dragonflies and damselflies. And the other question I had on that was the submission deadline was July 31st. I'm assuming that we still, the board can still approve that or disapprove it, whichever way they want to go?
The answer to that is yes. The, the project, of course, the match is internal, so it's not actually costing us real dollars. But it generates these revenues for Engric and for the college. So the study itself is, you know, certainly valid within the purview of what we, we see as Engric's mission, and it, it does relate to endangered species and species that are at risk. So effectively, you know, that's basically what I know about it. If you have other questions, or maybe someone else here that could answer them.
Okay. Yeah, probably, I mean, you probably wouldn't know exactly what the deliverable is, is from this, from this study.
No, I do not.
John Coffers is the principal investigator. We could get a report back to you.
Do you say this is not cash out of the Lewis and Clark?
No, it's not.
Okay. It's, okay.
In-kind.
In-kind, okay. Thank you. Any further discussion?
Clarification on that. The matching requirement, 161,500 dollars, that's from the college?
No, I think he said it was in-kind. In other words, would you explain how the in-kind works?
It's the salary.
Doctors, Doctor Zwinsey's coming up here. Hold on a second.
It usually involves salaries of the, of our scientists, and he collabor, and other collaborators that he'll be working with. So we, right, so we pay our scientists. We use that in-kind as the match.
Okay.
So it's not like extra money. It's that we're already paying them, and, and even the facilities and things that we already have, we can all count as in-kind against those grants.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further questions? Call for the vote.
Tolgetzky?
Yes.
Wertz?
Yes.
McCain?
Yes.
Hyon?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Rust?
Yes.
Hanfelder?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes. Item B, approve Amarin incentivized retro-commissioning survey.
Nate Keener's here.
Good evening. My name is Nate Keener. I'm director of sustainability. Tonight, I'm seeking approval for an Amarin incentivized retro-commissioning study. Most folks don't know what retro-commissioning is, so you can think of it kind of like a tune-up. So when you build a building and you, you start it in operation, it performs, you know, you hope, just as efficiently as you want it to. Over the years, those systems can degrade. You can lose efficiency in the operation of those systems. And so the retro-commissioning study comes in and looks at the building automation system. So the, the way that we have the computers programmed to fire up the HVAC systems, the heating and the air conditioning, when we have pumps come on, the various ways that we regulate, the balance of the internal air changing over with the external air. And so with this project, Amarin is offering an incentive to pick up the cost of the study. The study will be done by a The study will be done by a registered service provider through Ameren. We're working locally with Sitten on that. So they've done an initial walkthrough and produced the application and the explanation of potential results page that you should, you should all have. And so wanted to just kind of make clear that approving, moving forward with the work of the study will then commit us to implementing 70% of the zero to one-year payback measures. So they're going to come back with a report. Sitten will come back with a report that says, here are the items that you can implement to increase efficiency of, of the building operations. And by accepting that, that basically free report, we'll be tasked with implementing 70% of those measures. So zero to one-year payback means that we'll pay out to have those measures implemented, but they will pay, pay us back in lower energy bills in zero to one year.
Nate, we have some experience in this from a previous project?
Yeah, and I have just a couple of numbers here. So we did a similar project in 2017, and based on, on that project, math commons, electricity use fell by 19% on a weather-normalized basis. Science fell about 18% weather-normalized, and nursing fell 22% weather-normalized. And actually, nursing continues to get more efficient, so it's, it's 24%, below that 2016 baseline.
Thank you. Any questions? If not, call for the vote. Oh, we didn't, oh, okay, let's have a, sorry about that. We need a motion then to approve Ameren. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
And a second?
Second.
Okay. Have a motion and second, several seconds, okay. And now we'll call for the vote.
Tolgetzky?
Yes.
Wertz?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
McCain?
Yes.
Hyen?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Rust?
Yes.
Hanfelder?
Yes.
Item C on action items, we need a motion to approve, approval of changes to personnel policies. Do we have a motion to approve that, that item?
Motion.
Been a motion made and seconded?
Second.
And there's a second. Further discussion? This is the Gallagher report.
I think Laurie Arson gave her prepared to make, to have a discussion, or we can do something else, whatever the.
So as many of you know, and, and we've been talking about for the past couple of meetings, we've been undergoing a compensation and classification review with a consultant over the past two years. And we sought out that consultancy. One, it had been a strategic initiative of our strategic plan because our classification system has been in place for over 20 years. We are experiencing extremely high turnover in particular areas. Many of, of those people leaving stating it was for better dollar amounts for same opportunities at other regional institutions. Just as an example, since 2014, we've had 28 academic advisors through the enrollment center, over half of those left with, before even serving a year. And those, those, those particular jobs are important to our student retention and graduation efforts because we want our students to go down into the enrollment center and, and see those same faces every year. That helps with our retention efforts. So we surveyed our, our Illinois Community College list serve when we thought about venturing out onto this classification review. Gallagher was a company that we heard a number of recommendations for, and so we started our original engagement with them, reviewing our classification system. There were over 130 staff positions that have been reviewed during this first phase, and the job descriptions for each of those were reviewed. The consultant himself came in and met with groups of people to, to gain a better understanding of what duties they were actually completing. So we, we focused on our primary staff positions, and then we were trained, our HR staff was trained on how to evaluate any future positions, and we, we tried to keep it as minimal as possible to reduce the cost in the study. Gallagher has a patented method of job evaluation that's known as the decision band method, and it basically, basically classifies the complexity of the decisions that individuals would make in their daily job functions. And so we've been trained on how to apply that going forward. Once the positions for all employees were evaluated, they were assigned a new band, a grade, and a subgrade as part of this DBM method. And then we requested an assessment from Gallagher as to whether we should look at doing that second phase, which is that compensation study. So we did involve them in that. And that involved interviewing, or not interviewing, but creating a custom survey that was sent to 34 different community colleges that are identified as our peer institutions from either Illinois Community College Board or through IPADS, which is the Integrated Post-Secondary Education Data System. And so we sent a very detailed survey to them and received, received their feedback. Gallagher took that information and combined that information along with all of the labor market data that's published in the national salary surveys, and then normalized that data for the godfrey market. The result of that compensation analysis revealed that a majority of our employees fall within those recommended salary ranges as part of this proposed classification compensation plan. Overall, Liston-Clark was considered to be 8% under-market in the aggregate, which meant that there was about 80 employees who are currently under-market and about 30 who were identified as above-market. So we spent a great deal of time over these past few months working with our consultant, finance, legal, our senior leadership meeting with some of you, our board members, to go over this. Obviously, we, we see that the cost of bringing 80 individuals to the full recommended scale would not be something we would recommend doing all at once. And so what we're proposing is that we would implement this over three phases. As you might recall, during the budget approval process, there was a line item included that would allow phase one, that would fund phase one in terms of our, which would be our recommendation. And then we would hope that over these next two budget cycles, we would be able to implement those next, those final two phases. Obviously, this is going to take a lot of communication. We'd like to see this effective September 1st and have a plan in place to communicate this with all of our employees. Obviously, all of our employees will be communicated to because everyone will have a new classification. And then those who might have compensation affected would be communicated to as well. In doing this, there were a number of personnel policies that will need to be revised for a number of reasons, mainly because of the new verbiage, the new classification language that would be used. We wanted to make sure that any salary increases or promotions would also limit, be, be limited in terms of our 6% serves issues, so we wouldn't incur any penalties. We need new methodologies for new hires in terms of, in terms of determining their salaries and acknowledgement of how to handle those who might currently be or leading to outside of those ranges. So it's, it's been a tremendous amount of work over these past two years, and I want to thank our board members who have been involved and asked questions. I know some of you have called, Gabe, or I, and, and we've met with some of you. We're really trying to do this as fiscally, as responsible as possible, but we acknowledge there are a number of inequities for some of our employees. And we're hoping that with approval, we can move this forward and start addressing some of those realized inequities. If there's any questions, or Gabe, anything you would want to add to that?
So can you remind me what the total cost of this study was?
The two that we paid to Gallagher. Phase one was just, was $24,000, $24.8, and then the compensation study was $24.5, so just under 50 at total over these past two years.
And I'm wondering if we had all this turnover in the academic advisors, why didn't we just change the pay? Are we bound by the old policy? Why didn't we just increase the pay and stop the turnover?
Right, so, so those pay, those salary ranges are set by our current compensation plan that sets over our classification, classification structure. So it wasn't, I, I use that as an example, but it's not just enrollment. We were hearing it from other areas as well. And I think some of the things we've talked about too is just the way, the way our old system tended to value external candidates over internal candidates. And, you know, there were just some things that, that are not working in our current structure that we have taken the advice of, from Gallagher to rectify. And, and we've worked really hard with finance and with legal because we want to have this system in place and make sure there are things that will not break the structure, that it will stay within market going forward, so that we're not coming back to this point every 20 years and having to reevaluate. So as part of that recommendation, we would suggest moving that, that total compensation structure 2.75% every, every three years in order to make sure that we're keeping up with market and not having to come back and redo a study year after year.
I'd like to make a comment of a good, Chairman. I went out and looked at the study. It's, it's extensive. I can, it was a lot of work. I mean, it's a ton of work, and I think it was, it was well-invested money. I actually think this study will pay for itself because if you look at the amount of time that we have had people turn over and retrain people, it takes money to train people. And the college currently employs five full-time academic advisors. Since January 1st, 2014, the college has employed 28 full-time academic advisors. During the timeframe between January 1st, 14, and current, the longest tenure of a full-time academic advisor was 3.5 years. The 20, 27 academic advisors during that timeframe. 14 served a position of one year before leaving, 2 served between one and two years before leaving, 6 served in a position of two to three years before leaving, and 5 are currently in that, in that position. And many times, the, the student never got to see the same person twice. And then you go into financial aid. Since January 1st, we've had 11 financial aid advisors, and we should have four people in that office. During the timeframe between January 1st, 14, and the current longest tenure, we've had 17 years. The remaining 10 financial advisors during that lifetime, during that timeframe, 2, 2 served a position for one year, 3 served for three to four years, 1 served for four to five years, and 4 are currently serving that position. My point is, you've had a tremendous turnover of people. You're constantly training people. You're spending money training people, and you're, you're doing a disservice to your students that they don't see the same person twice, and academic advisors are financial aid advisors. And I think this, open this up, will this money that we save not training people and not having a turnover will pay for the study, and the, the bonus is what we're doing for our students.
And when we talked about this, the peers, I had a problem with that in that it didn't include Lincolnland or SWIC. And is that because they, they were not considered our peers?
So we, we talked about what's, you know, who we should survey, and we worked with our consultant on that. Of course, he recommended our IPADS peer group, and those are community colleges nationwide that are like us in terms of enrollment numbers and programs offered and financial aid and a number of different factors. ICCB assigns us to our peer groups, and so, I mean, we could have, we could have sent surveys to everyone, and we could have, you know, surveyed SWIC and Lincolnland. We chose those 34 institutions because that would, that would have represented a really good cross-section of community colleges, both in Illinois and nationwide, that are determined by other outside entities as being like us, so.
And how many of those did we get back?
There were, was it 11? 10. 10 responded. And again, these were extremely detailed surveys. We get them all the time, and we were extremely happy to get that 30% participation.
You said it, it was about 130 staff positions, so at what level did it stop? Just for clarification.
So everything from clerk to director. We did not include any administration in this survey. It wasn't recommended to do so at the time. And to be fair, we weren't experiencing the turnover in those areas that we were hearing from other positions.
It's still, I still don't see why we just couldn't raise the bounty pay academic advisor. I mean, you can't, you can't go get approval for that?
Sure, so it's, it is a group, it's easy to point to them because they're a group, but there are individual positions throughout the campus that we're also seeing high turnover in. And, you know, people like Kent and, and Delphina, the director of enrollment, and Angela Weaver, they live in our building because they're constantly interviewing. And so, of course, those are easy to point to, but there are other areas where we're just not able to attract or retain our employees. We wanted to see if there were any other inequities within our system, and that's why we looked across the board. It had been over 20 years, so.
The financial aid and, and academic advisors were the big ones, and that's the, that's the one you see, but there was a lot of other ones. There were 80 total.
Those are two areas that turnover in every college and university. That's the highest turnover in those two areas. So we're not unique in that.
I would say that's probably, that's probably true. I mean, we do hear, at least over the last five years, we've heard of a lot of people who leave here, they go to SIUE. I used to have a friend in, that was a dean over at SIUE, and they actually took one of our academic advisors, and I said, Curtis, what, what the heck happened? He took one of our, our advisors. And he said, well, you know, hey, we're, we're the, the training ground for SLU, right? So people leave us for, for a higher rate at SLU. The thing I found unique in that is that, you know, so 28 different academic advisors over five years. We did hear a lot leaving the doors saying compensation's the number one reason we're leaving. We're going to make $15,000 more at SIUE or SLU or UMSO, wherever they may be. But uniquely, I can think of at least five to six off the top of my head that left and then applied back here. So it made us think that there's something here that they wanted to come back for. They wanted to leave because of the compensation, but there, there was something else that goes into that factor of why people want to be in a job. So the, the thing I wanted to address, though, Ms. Johnson, is talking about the academic advisors, I, I think, in the sense that, at, at least since I've been in this position, I've heard that position of academic advisor is underpaid. And we kept hearing that, kept hearing that. Well, we didn't know what we didn't know, right, until we got there. And we thought we could adjust that, that pay rate for that position alone and, and try to put a Band-Aid on it. But first, we didn't know whether that really was the issue and how far off the market we were. And second, I think we didn't know what, what then extrapolates from that, what other position says, well, you know, we're in the same boat, so we gotta, we gotta do the same thing here. And I think, to me, that just showed, we don't want to do a Band-Aid approach to this. If we're going to look at academic advisors, look, let's look at everybody. And if, if you have, I don't know if you have the, the spreadsheet or the presentation, but if you get a minute and look at page 29, those were the 45 positions that we used as benchmarks as for our custom survey, and looking at, you know, some of the other positions like computer support specialists or athletic trainers, we were 45%, below market and 30% below market in those positions too. So I, I think there were obviously other positions that were in that same boat, but the academic advisors were certainly the biggest one and the one we heard about most often because of what Laurie said, we were constantly retraining and constantly rehiring for those positions because there are more of them, so.
The money, you were talking about adjusting is already in that budget, correct?
For, for phase one.
For first year?
For phase one, yes.
Yep.
Wasn't it $190,000 for this year?
For phase one.
Yeah, I have a concern about that. Are these positions, ones on the ICCB website, do you have to report these? Does it not go down to this level?
I was thinking ICCB is faculty and management. Does it go down to staff?
So, I mean, it seems like we could have gone on that website and just looked at what everybody else was paying rather than spend $50,000 to compare. I don't know, is that naive of me to think that?
Yeah, I mean, again, we, we wanted to make sure there weren't other inequities. It was, it's easy to, to, to point to, you know, these areas because there are so many of those positions. But as he mentioned, they're, they're one-offs, you know, the athletic trainer position. And so you do this for one, I mean, we, we did, we talked about this. Can't, can't we just make it right? And then you do it for academic advisors, and then the next group comes forward, and then the next group, and where does it stop? So rather than throwing money at it, we really wanted to see, is this a real problem? And if so, as Gabe said, how far off the mark are we in these positions?
I think, I think too, you know, we have done that for specific positions, and, and let And let me say that if I said that was for all positions, I did think it went farther down. Mary corrected me in that that's faculty and management positions that are reported to ICCB. But, you know, we could do that. And we have oftentimes on kind of a short-term basis, looked at other positions. Hey, what does Lincolnland pay? Or what does Blackhawk pay these positions? But when you get to this breadth of work, there's more that goes into it than just the salary, right? There's also the benefits. There's also everything that's associated with the cost of living in that area, the cost of labor market data, or the cost of labor in that area. And I think we could do a lot of that kind of front-level work. But to be able to normalize the data to the market, you know, and to the labor data would, would be something that we aren't trained in being able to do effectively and independently.
I think it might be helpful if I just add something here because I have maybe been here a long time. But one of the, the last time any kind of compensation study was done was about 20 years ago. And so, part of the reason that the system, so it worked fine and it was set up well. But over the years, a number of Band-Aid approaches have been taken to it in an effort to make adjustments, which is how the system kind of got out of whack. And so, you know, one of the things that I know Gallagher was looking at was trying to kind of equalize pay amongst individuals that were making, had similar decision-making responsibilities or kind of equal pay for equal complexity of work, which is why they wanted to look at the whole system. I think the other thing that is important to recognize is that, you know, one of the things that could have been done was just to look at a few one-off situations. But generally, when you're doing these compensation studies, you do try to look at institutions that are similar, that kind of look like you as much as possible so that, because, for example, if you looked at a municipality, you wouldn't compare Edwardsville to St. Louis. You would want to look at, you know, communities that kind of look like each other. And the same thing kind of with community colleges to make sure, because not everyone has kind of the same ability to pay. And so, I think that was one of the things that Gallagher looked at is, you know, who has kind of similar resources and similar abilities, so.
Call for the vote?
I want, I want to say a couple of things about this. I applaud your, your efforts to, to try to come up with a good system, a good, because it's not easy. And from what I've, people I've talked to, Gallagher is well-respected and that. I mean, that made a good choice on the organization there, I'd say. I, I'm just not comfortable with some of the methodology that they used. I think the peer group, I'm not, I don't know about that. But you know, we're not going to redo the study. I'm pretty sure of that. We're not going to redo the study. But I'd like, I think the, I don't have a very good understanding of the implementation process. I don't understand, you know, who, what, how the decision process is going to work as far as who gets the increases. I kind of, kind of have an idea and, and how much. And yeah, it's going to be spread over three years, but how? It doesn't, you know, that's not really, it's not clicking with me. And then, of course, we do have some people that fall on the upside of, of the market. You know, what happens there? Now, I'm, so it's, and I am familiar with, with, with this type of thing. So, at this point, I can't vote for it. But I'm not saying that we're not gonna, that we don't want to do it, of course. But I'm not ready to vote for it.
So, if I could try to, just to address your, your two questions there, the implementation and what was the second part?
Well...
Money gets, hell, the money gets...
Yeah.
Yeah. So, we, we looked at, you know, of course, there are some people who are 40% out of. There are some people who are 5% out of. But how can we do this that is fair across the board? Again, our goal was, you know, to recognize inequities and deal with them. So, we're, what we're recommending is three phases. And so, breaking everything down into a third and into three phases. So, this is, this is where they need to be. Here's where they are today. And basically, taking a third of that and trying to rectify that over the next three years to get them to those new minimums of the, of the classification, the salary minimums of, of that classification. So, there are 80 positions that are under-market that we would, that we are wanting to get to the minimum. Not getting them, you know, in the, in the middle or not taking into account anything else, just getting them within those salary minimums. The 30 that are over-market as part of our personnel policies that are also recommended in front of you tonight, we are not recommending, nor did Gallagher recommend, that we take money away from anyone that, that going forward, if those people are to leave, that their positions would be replaced within those current salary ranges. So, we're not going to hire, if somebody is, you know, 30% over-market, we're not going to hire somebody in to replace them at 30% over-market. They would, going forward, we would replace them with somebody within that new established salary range.
Minister, I, I'm pretty sure when we talked about this, there's nothing in this program that's performance-based. It's all based on longevity.
There is nothing that is performance-based. And, and after we met with you, we did survey all of our community colleges throughout Illinois. And not a single respondent within Illinois Community College system implements any type of performance-based funding. It's very common in the public sector that, that it is just an annual percentage increase across the board. It's, it's not anything that we've been able to find.
Now, for some reason, I've been under the impression that in the past, we've just given increases in agreement with the, the faculty contract. So, it's been 4% for the last five years. Is that true?
It hasn't always been 4%. Some years it was 3%. But it is true that generally, the nonrepresented employees receive the same across-the-board increase that the faculty received.
And, you know, this year, for example, you know, the faculty contract called for less than 3% salary increase. They got essentially 3% though because of labs and things like that, you know, the increases there. So, in terms of the general increase, the faculty didn't get the 3% that the employees got. There is a little variation.
Kevin, you, you say that you can't support this, but it is a problem. If you can't support this, and it is a problem, what's your alternative? What's your option? How we fix it?
So, if somebody is, you know, one of these 30 who are over, are they going to continue to get a 2% and 3% raise every year then?
They, whatever are, in the policy that's written, they are essentially grandfathered in to, and to get whatever increase is awarded to them from the board, correct?
So, in, in the future, in the policy, we had recommended that if, you know, so again, as Laurie had mentioned, if, if one of those positions were to vacate, somebody were to hire, they'd be hired within the range. If at point, anyone, any one of those replacements would exceed a maximum, they wouldn't continue to receive anything on their base. They'd have the option to receive then from the college, an additional bonus, so to speak. So, it wouldn't go on to base pay if that were to ever happen. It'd be our goal not to hire anybody in at that point.
Is there anything that would preclude us from going to a performance-based system? And still using the study that's been done? Because the first, there were two phases to the studies, I understand. The first phase was evaluating the jobs and assigning them a value. And then, the second phase was taking that and creating a compensation system from it, more or less, right?
Right. Creating those salary ranges, correct?
But, and so, if I understand that, that would not preclude us from having a performance-based system?
Not necessarily. But I do think we could get into some of those situations where people might be maxing out faster than others within those salary ranges, depending on, you know, their performance and that might be something we would have to advise.
That's the whole idea of a performance-based system, right? And some people that are underperforming don't get as much of an increase.
That's my understanding.
But that's something would take some time and study to put in place. I think this, this situation, we need to take care of tonight.
No further comments? Call for the vote?
Wertz?
Yes.
McCain?
Yes.
Hyon?
No.
Johnson?
No.
Rust?
No.
Hanfelder?
No.
Tolgetzky?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Is now this time for a public comment? Jill will announce the...
So, for any of you who are here to...
Oh, I'm sorry. For any of you who are here to speak to the board, this is your opportunity. As a reminder, the board rules allow each speaker three minutes. And as a courtesy to others who might be waiting to speak, if you're here with the group, if you could pick a spokesperson and limit your comments as the group to three minutes. Is anyone here for public comment?
The church, or the Chair will turn the gavel over to Kevin Russ to chair this segment of the program. Thank you.
I'm Dr. Ed Ragsdale. I'm a advocate for educational excellence. And I want to compliment the board on a very fine meeting and particularly the emergency response effort. I do feel that any job should be compensated to some extent on merit and productivity. And I'm glad to hear that you're thinking about that. And I, I think it ought to have a lot of thought. And part of the compensation ought to be based on merit. Thank you very much.
Anyone else?
No further comments. I'm going to adjourn the meeting.